Alrighty, I'd like to call the orders like a special emergency meeting. This will all rise and it'll be the last time for you here, Steve, so I mean, this is fitting. Alrighty, thank you. Silence your cell phones. This meeting has been placed on the agenda to allow council staff and public to participate. Being the governor's executive order in 2920, there'll be limited access to the council chambers. If you want to join, you can join via Zoom or via the teleconference that other people are on. This is time for public comments. Council, we ask no questions, but take no action during the public comment section of this meeting, except to refer staff that they prepare a report or place on the future agenda. If you're here to online to make a comment on a specific agenda item to speak at this time, if not, this is a time, please let me yourself to five minutes. Please speak loud and clear. Say your name, address, all that jazz, provide information if appropriate. You're not required to, if you don't, not desire to do so. Is there anybody on public comments on this? Do you have any public comments?
None.
Okay, well then we shall go into number one. Unqualified urgency ordinance of the city of Waireka declaring a local emergency and authorizing the delay of the sale and use of fireworks, which may create a threat to public safety deemed to be arising from the incidents of the lava fire and setting forth the facts constituting such urgency and finding the ordinance exempt for sequel.
Paul McCoy.
Join the meeting.
Great, so do you want to, is this Don wants to talk first?
Did you want me to go ahead, Don? Or do you want?
Here's the facts. I just wrote them down.
Okay, so Mayor members of the council, what's before you is an ordinance having to do with fireworks. And the reason we brought it before you is that currently we are experiencing very low humidity conditions, we have high winds, we have high temperatures, and we also have people from our city as well as adjacent fire departments out fighting the lava fire. I've checked with the NOAA, the weather folks up in Medford, and while the conditions will be somewhat better on July 4th, according to their current predictions or the predictions as of yesterday, it's still going to be hot. It's still going to be incredibly low humidity, in fact, the same as what it is now. And it will also be windy, although perhaps not as bad as today. Currently, the fat and the fire weather that we're seeing now that's driving the lava fire is expected to go through Thursday, which is day after tomorrow. That probably will mean that the fire will continue its spread north and some of the, I talked to the chief and he was of that opinion based on talking to some of the other people that he was familiar with. When we have fireworks in town, we want to make sure that we have not just the fire departments, which as I said, we've sent some people over as adjacent fire departments. I've also done in the CAL FIRE, which back us up. But we also have police out for, to monitor those. We also have police on the fire line as we speak right now. We do expect that to continue. So with the weather conditions, I expect to continue with the resources that are gone because of the fire. We are recommending that we delay the use of fireworks while the situation is in, or while the situation continues. Anything I missed, Don?
No, you might just mention that there's a imminent, that if a fire did occur, that the ability to suppress the fire is greatly diminished and there is a serious imminent and dire threat to the public safety if we are not able to suppress any fires that are started by virtue of fireworks. And the fireworks we're talking about is both the sale of safe and sane fireworks is defined in the code regulations and the use of them. And I believe the council is also intending to delay the exhibition of public pyrotechnic displays that normally happen annually.
Yes, I would actually concur with what the city attorney wrote down. He listened to me very well and put it in there. So I would concur with those, with those things. That is what we're concerned about is the possibility of having danger within our community of fire that could cause not just property damage, but also injuries or possibly fatalities if it could not be controlled in time.
With the wind and everything else is whooping it up now, it sounds like that's going to keep spreading.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the CAL FIRE did have a good grasp on it there earlier. They were, they had it blocked pretty good over the Shastine area. I didn't get word on that, that's all safe at least. But now that's reversing around, it's might be in hold of the ballgame. But thank you, Don, for getting this all situated and making it all legal and making it.
It is how I planned my day, but there you go.
Yeah, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
A lot of work in a short amount of time, thank you. Yeah, this is, so any other questions from council?
I'd just like to make a note that since Joan isn't on the phone or isn't called, hasn't called in, the council decision has to be unanimous.
It does.
Yes. Yeah.
In other words, a four-fifth vote if you have four people.
Four people, it's all.
Is four people.
Yeah. Is Paul still online?
Yes.
Yeah. Is he there?
I think. One is to delay the native, one is to delay the Native American fireworks. The other is to delay fireworks for the city of Waireka. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, I think that's your saying, yeah. Yeah, for fires.
What is the difference between delaying fireworks from a legal standpoint and canceling fireworks shows or canceling the sale of fireworks? What's the legal, why are we, why are we delaying it and not canceling it?
Well, I'm concerned that the issuance of permits has created a vested right to sell. And by delaying the, the sale, you're not prohibiting it and you're reducing our exposure to liability claims for lost profits.
Did you get that, Paul?
Okay, so, so now they can send all the fireworks back. So you're saying they will be allowed, the state of California, and the city's going to allow them to sell them after the established legal time that they would normally be able to sell them?
If.
Until further notice.
Until further notice is what it amounts to. Just if there was a circumstance that we could open it up and we, we could have that possibility opened up for sales, yes. But legally, this gives us, where we don't hinder those, those privileges of being able to sell them and hinder them from making a profit. So it keeps the liability of us off the hook, basically.
Well, I mean, the fact is, this was something that I know was discussed three weeks ago. Cause I know I tried to get it on the agenda like four or five weeks ago and my fellow council person didn't want it on there. My concern is that they can only sell to, I think it's midnight on July 4th. So why are we worried about delaying? Cause we're, in effect, we're canceling.
He needs the attorney to repeat it.
I think the semantics is worth it.
What's that?
I think the semantic value is, is worth it to really use the word delay instead of cancel. Cause one is a claim and one is not necessarily a claim.
Joan Smith Freeman. Join the meeting.
They're both doing the same thing, however. They're both saying that they cannot sell fireworks as far as the nonprofits or the profits go. And, and they will be done as of July 24th or July 4th at midnight. And they're, and we're also saying that the tribe cannot and the chamber cannot set out fireworks on July 4th, but they're going to be able to set them off later. Or I mean, like on July 8th or July 12th, I'm, I guess I'm not, that's what delay means to me. Cancel means we're not going to move forward with them. Delay means we're going to delay them until we think it's a little bit safer time and then we'll let them shoot them off or sell them. We don't have the authority to let them sell past July 4th, that's a state law.
Correct.
So council member McCoy, I want to make sure that you're aware that the.
Who am I speaking with?
This is Steve, this is Steve, I'm sorry. This is Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
That the Karuk tribe and casino have talked about taking, doing fireworks perhaps on New Year's Eve. But they, they decided not to do the show during the time we were talking about this. Not as a result of this ordinance, sir.
But, but we're talking about delaying theirs, right? We're going to put language in that delays the Karuk and the chamber from doing their fireworks on July 4th.
Yes, if they suddenly decided that they wanted to do it, this would prevent them from doing that, yes.
Okay. So again, how does the loss of claim work? Because they, they're not losing any money on it. They, I mean, from my understanding, it's the only have half the money raised anyway. And they're not losing any money on that. So I'm trying to understand how the claim works there and how the claim works with like the Elks and Splash and any of the other nonprofits that are selling fireworks.
That.
If I, if you could, if the attorney could explain that to me. Cause I'm not, I mean, cancel and delay, delay tells me we're going to allow them to have it maybe.
Don?
We're not doing it.
I agree.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't like, I don't like the language of the word delay. I think it's somewhat trying to hide. It's, it's hiding something, we're canceling, we're not delaying it. They could, Elks and all the, all the other organizations can apply for special permit to sell during Christmas and New Year's. They can do it, it's been done before here in, in Waireka. And they can sell if they, if they want to sell it at that time, they just have to file a special permit.
So the city council. Okay, so the city council has the right and authority to, my job is to try to mitigate risks to the maximum extent possible, whether or not it sounds like we're hiding some balls. And if the council believes that it is the better angel to say, we'll just say cancel and, and darn the risk, that's your prerogative.
Okay. Yeah, cause I, I don't see the risk, I don't see any risk. I, I mean, if the Elks are going to sue us or Splice is going to sue us, they're pooping in their own backyard. You know, we're trying to stay safe for the citizens, which is what I had asked for three weeks ago in a meeting, or four, maybe four weeks ago. We're just trying to keep the community safe. You know, we're not worried about, you know, unfortunately, we can't worry about the profits. And I know that was something that came up at an earlier meeting and said, well, Elks is going to lose, you know, they're going to lose their ability to raise money. And I know, cause I, I sold them three years, but I just, the, the language concerns me.
Aaron, at this time, I would like to point out that it appears that Joan Smith Freeman is on the call.
No, I think we just lost her.
We just lost her again?
Yeah, sorry, Dwayne, I almost got in once, lost connection.
Okay.
I'm sure that she's on there.
Yeah, he's received a phone call from her. A text, okay.
So, um, yes, Debbie, I don't get a comment.
Yes, I, in my opinion, I do see that we're accomplishing the same end result, whether we say cancel or postpone. And they're using the word postpone is going to minimize the risk of any claim against the city. And I'm comfortable with that. I, I don't have a problem with the wording as is. It accomplishes the same thing to get us through the fire season.
I, I agree, this thing, what we're trying to do is, and I totally understand what you're saying, Paul. I think we're just trying to make it as legal as possible and trying to get through just this issue that we're presented, unfortunately. And it's, this is a kind of a weird situation, means we've had the fire chief and, and the absence of him and then everybody out on calls and everything else. So I totally understand what you're saying, Paul, but I'd really, really invite to move forward, if you don't mind, if that's your call.
Oh, I'm trying to move, oh, no, I'm trying to move forward, but we have a third.
What's that? What is that, Paul, I'm sorry?
They not mean the same thing. And, and so we need to, I mean, and, 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 you know, you're, the attorney, Don's a wordsmith. So he knows that, that they don't mean the same thing, they have subtle, subtle differences. Um, and if we, if we're going to delay, which is what I'm assuming Don has written in there, then delay means that at some point, we're going to come back and say, okay, we've lifted the delay. Now you can sell and now you can shoot. Well, they can shoot, but they can't sell, because we have no control over that. Because we're not the state of California and the state of California controls the, the sale of fireworks, safe and sane fireworks. So that, that, again, Dwayne, that's, that's my concern.
Right.
And again, my, my other concern is that we're, if the Elks are thinking about suing us and we have an elk on the board, I mean, on the council, I think we probably know it, they'd probably say it. But I'm, I'm concerned that we're more worried about the safety of, of the city being sued for lost profit. And we know that we don't make tons on these stands anyway. Cause I, again, I did them for 18 or 19 years, I don't know, for, for VFW. But I think we should worry more about the safety of the people and less about how it looks, you know, how it's going to appear. That, that's just, again, that's just me. I support going forward, I don't support the language.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I think the language is poor, I'm sorry, I think it's, I think it's poorly written.
Okay.
And no offense, no offense, John, but you write from an attorney's standpoint. We don't think from an attorney's standpoint, that's why we hire you. But there are times when, sometimes when attorneys write things and they're, they're, they're kind of on the edge or they're a little bit cold. And this is maybe one of those where it's a little bit cold.
Yeah, it's a, it's an occupational hazard and you're certainly free, if the council chooses, to, to change it. I take no, no offense whatsoever, believe me, I've, I've, I've been called worse than cold in my writing.
If we're going to, if we're going to move to cancel, can we say cancel until a certain date? Can we put an end date in there, like December 25th, 2022 or 21?
Well.
Do that, Don?
Here's the deal, if the, the law is that on an emergency ordinance like this, it's supposed to be terminated at the earliest possible opportunity. And so if you put a, a date out there and it's supposed to be reviewed every 60 days to, to make sure that the urgency still, emergency still exists. So I think, I think really, as soon as we have fire season or our fire equipment back, the prohibition, the delay ought to be, the ordinance ought to be canceled. And you know, if the next available opportunity is, is the mid-December, then that's, that's when they get it. But you know, I mean, the law, yeah.
Well, I'll go for it, but remember, council, we're the ones that complained because the government kept telling us we have to wear masks. Well, you're going to, in six weeks, you won't have to wear a mask, in eight weeks, you won't have to wear a mask. And now we are telling people, you know, well, in two weeks, we'll check it, in four weeks, we'll check it. So we're, I'm just saying, we need to do it, yes, but we're playing the same game that the state of California and federal government is playing with us and we don't like it.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. It's always.
And we're, we're, we're playing, we're the Waireka gods right now. We're, well, you know, we'll, in four weeks, no, not ready, six weeks, no, not ready, 12 weeks, no, can't shoot them. 14 weeks, no, can't shoot them, come back and then, yeah, keep coming back till, till city council in their infinite wisdom decides it's okay that you can shoot fireworks off in the city. That's, that's all I'm saying, think about it.
Yeah, no, I.
Think long hard about it. Cause I don't want to be President Biden, I don't want to play President Biden or Tony Fauci or Dr. Burge or anything like that. I, you know, I'd like to have a firm date when we are going to just say fireworks will be back in if we're going to delay them. If we're going to cancel them, cancel them, it doesn't matter. They're canceled, they're done.
Okay. Okay, so what is, if we cancel, Don, is that okay?
You're the, you're the ultimate arbiters of the risk.
Okay.
Use the word, you, you, if you're willing to take the risk of potential litigation, then, then cancel is just fine.
So that's, that's the risk we're taking, council.
I guess that's, I mean, we take risk every day, I guess, and you know, it's, I think we are looking out for the safety and I think with everything going on, that we'd be able to prove that.
Yeah.
So I just, I think we should just cancel them, because I don't want to come back every 60 days. And who knows if we're going to be out of fires, there are fire danger in December. But things, the way it's at, we've had no water and you know, who wants to keep going back 60 days? And then wonder if we don't allow them to shoot it off at New Year's Eve, when we're still too dangerous.
Yeah, it's always that possibility, I guess. Okay. So we're at that point. We either move forward or we, either way, we risk the possible scenario of some type of litigation in the future, so.
And, and Don, is there a possi, is there a possibility, even if we just say postpone, are we to say cancel? Isn't there still the risk that they could bring litigation against us if they wanted to?
Anybody can bring a suit for anything, yeah, there's always a possibility.
So it doesn't really matter, the wording, I can see it's like a little more protective clause, but if they still.
I noticed, I did notice that other agencies that impose what we're doing used the word delay. I assume for the same purpose.
Gotcha. So your, your feel, your feeling is to prevent any other future litigation, hopefully by putting the word delay in there?
Right.
Okay.
Can we, it would be helpful for me on the phone, I, I probably the only one, but to know who's speaking, that would be very helpful.
Say that again?
For me, I'm being selfish, on the phone, it would be helpful to know who is speaking.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
That was Don speaking.
Okay, so still at that point.
Yeah, we need to decide.
Sorry.
This is Debbie speaking, we need to, so it comes down to council discussing the value of the verbiage between postpone and cancel.
Delay and cancel.
Delayed and cancel.
I would say delay and prohibit.
And prohibit, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Place that's in the ordinance is in the title, so you know, you just strike out the word delay and put the word prohibit in there and I've changed that on mine, but the word document now to see if there's, if it's anywhere else. But if it is, I'll just put prohibit if that's, if that's your choice.
Okay.
If I can ask one more question? This is Debbie again. Say, Don, you were not able to find one other city that used the word prohibit, they all used delay?
Well, the order of the Mount Shasta Fire Chief, I believe, just flat out prohibited. But I, I don't know that there was any attorney input in that particular document.
Okay, the other side of the coin is it doesn't, did it put a date in as to when that prohibit time period would be over? Or is that for all of time?
It's, it's, it's supposed to be dissolved at the earliest possible time. That's, that's practical.
So it still has to come back in front of the council?
Yeah, in fact, if, if it's not, if it doesn't come back in, in front of the council in 60 days, you mandatorily have to pick it up and look at it and see if the emergency still exists.
That's for delay though, right?
No.
That's for either, okay.
Just an urgency ordinance, it's just like our COVID one where you pick it up every meeting and say, yeah, we'll continue the COVID protocols.
Oh, so either way.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. Okay.
Oh, that clarifies a lot.
Okay. All right, well then, I, I propose we change it to prohibit that. What is the wishes of the council?
Oh, so we're going to have to review this.
60 days either way.
Either way.
Yeah.
And if we go, so can.
I ask one more question. This is Paul, to ask one more question.
Yes, please.
We have one council member that, that sits, that is with, an elk. And I think that council member, because we're voting on her.
Paul, can you hear us? Do we lose you, Paul? So I think we lost Paul. We can't move forward, we can't move forward yet.
Can I ask, Don, may I ask you another question?
Of course.
So when either way gets reviewed, is there, do we also have the same opportunity to change the verbiage at that time?
I don't think so, you could impose a new one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, we might not be deciding this unless we go, Paul, is he back on, Paul?
You're going to need Paul or Joan to be on the call before you can vote.
Get Joan to call back.
Joan could be argued with a conflict of interest being involved with.
He's already trying to bring that up, that might be a problem.
So if, if we could say ban, that we don't have to go back in 60 days?
No, we still do.
Oh, we still do.
Yeah.
Either way.
So what's the difference?
I know.
Well.
One more liable, we have one higher risk, one lower risk, risk?
Let me track home, Joan.
Sorry for the delay, Don, we're trying to get somebody back on the phone.
You definitely need it.
We gotta have four people, or else it falls, it's hot in here. Yeah, it is.
Paul McCoy.
Paul, join the meeting.
Okay.
I got everybody.
Alrighty, so can you hear us good? Paul?
Are you high?
Are you high?
You there?
He's lit up like he's saying something. All words.
Well, Paul?
Yeah.
You there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, good. Oh, good. We lost you for a while.
Yeah, I, I'm at about ten thousand feet, so it's in the trees, just going, going in and out. I'm.
Oh, okay. So you said you had a question, but we lost you at that point in time. What was that question, sir?
Oh, quick question. Um, since we're, uh, since we're going to be ruling on something that affects the Elks, um, I think we have one, uh, council member that needs to recuse himself from the vote. But that still gives us, uh, uh, would give us a, if we all voted in favor, give us a four-o vote.
Yeah, Joan's not on right now. She's, she's not able to get on.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's you, Paul McCoy, Cory Middleton, Blake Keg, and Debbie Baird. Just so you know.
Okay. Well, it might be best to vote before she comes on. That way we don't have to recuse her.
She's not coming on. She can't get out. I've tried to text her and call her and she can't get out.
Okay.
So it's just us four.
Well, that's, that's, that'll be enough.
Okay. So back, back to this. What are the council's wishes? Do we want to prohibit or delay? That's the verbiage. Yes, please.
Or prohibit, delay, or cancel? That's our, that's your verbiage.
Well, prohibit's the same as cancel in this case, Paul.
What's that?
Uh, prohibit, Don says prohibit's the same as cancel.
They're not the same, they're not the same. That's okay.
Every sixty days. Paul, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Okay, so this is like our urgency ordinance that we're doing for the COVID. We have, no matter what, we have to review it every sixty days. So whether we say prohibit or delay, we still have to, uh, we still have to come back every sixty days and talk about it again.
I will give you vote, but I, but I will give you a vote, but I just go on record as saying I don't like the language. I think the language is cold.
Okay. Okey dokey. So, back again. We're back to this point. Do we have a delay or prohibit it?
I think we should take the advice of the attorney. That's what we're paying him for.
Okay, yes, let's leave it and.
Okay. So I guess with this point, it's been, it's been proposed to.
Mind you that, mind you that attorneys think one way though. Just remember that. They're not always correct. And no offense, Don.
Very true. Very, very true.
I'm only voting for myself. You guys make up your own mind.
Right. Right.
I've got it on.
All right. So you're saying to keep it as delayed. Motion to keep it as delayed and as stated as the city attorney has written down. You have a second on that?
A second.
All right, we have a, um, first and a second on this, um.
For, for clarity, Mayor, was the motion made by?
By Debbie Baird.
Okay.
And the second was done by Cory Middleton.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Uh, council member Baird.
Aye.
Council member Freeman.
Absent.
Absent. Council member McCoy.
Aye.
Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor K.
Aye.
Okay, it is.
Mr. City Manager, do we need to, do we need to, the minister reflects that we recused or that, that, that count, uh, councilwoman, uh, was asked to recuse herself, even though she wasn't there? Cause you just called for a vote for her. From her.
Um, I think it's just noted that she's absent. I don't know if we can do anything else legally.
Yeah, I, I'd like it noted, I, I'd like it noted that I, Councilman McCoy asked for her to be recused from the vote.
Okay, that's very well noted. Thank, yeah, I agree. Thank you.
So, um, I know that, um, uh, council member Freeman, this is Don Henyon. I know the council member Freeman Smith, um, called the FPPC and got, um, and, um, asked for an opinion on that. I, I didn't ask her what the result of that was.
Okay. Well, as long as it's, as long as it's noted, that's the main thing. All righty, thank you.
So, Don? Don, would you have recused her? Did you have, said she needed to recuse herself?
No, I, 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 I didn't think that there was enough there to, to recuse herself. She doesn't have a, a direct financial interest in it. And, um, you know, the council members are involved in everything. Um, it's, uh, I, I really thought, um, it wasn't enough, but I didn't research it either. I just gave her, um, my feeling off the top of my head and said, call the experts, which is the FPPC. They, they, those guys know their regulations inside and out.
Okay, well, I, I still wanted it. Thank you for including it in the minutes.
Yep, it'll be in the minutes. Thank you. All righty, any other comments before we close this? No? Okay. Well, then I call this meeting to an end, then. We are done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We are adjourned.